Good evening, and welcome to the June 9, 2016, meeting of the Municipality of Anchorage Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. The Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Cars?
Here.
Ms. Iker?
Here.
Ms. Dole?
Here.
Ms. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Ms. Hickok?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Vega and Mr. Ronan, been excused. Thank you.
Next item of business on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from Thursday, April 14, 2016. May I have, thank you, Mr. Ayers and Ms. Iker seconds, approval of the minutes? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, okay, seeing none, the minutes are approved. Next item of business, Special Order of Business Executive Sessions, disclosures. Are there any disclosures this evening?
I need to abstain from participating in the vote of the minutes and the consent agenda, as I was not serving on the board last time.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Any other disclosures?
I also have to abstain from the vote, since I was not on the board then.
Thank you, Ms. Hickok. Any other disclosures? Okay, moving on, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda are matters before the board that do not require a public hearing, considered as a whole without debate. Does any member wish to remove the item from the consent agenda for debate? Seeing none, then may I have a positive motion for approval. Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Iker, thank you. Are there any objections to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is appearance requests. We don't have any appearance requests this evening, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, which brings us to public hearings. We have two variance cases this evening, and the variance hearings for the zoning board of examiners and appeals are run by regulation, Regulation 2112-520. Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed, so I will explain the procedure for both cases. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance. Board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case, and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance shall be granted. The board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the chair. The hearing will then be open for the public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony at the end of the time allowed. The light will turn red, and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board members, the staff, and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, and the chair will close the meeting, and the matter will rest with the board. There are two other items that I'd like to advise you of. Any action by the board shall require a favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board. The fully constituted board shall include all members of the board, including vacancies, and those not excused for conflict of interest, which we don't have tonight, which means that even though we are missing two members, four, a variance to be granted that needs to have five positive votes. And then, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. Okay, the first case is case number 2016-0045. Petitioner Marvin Ballard is the petitioner, his representative here.
He indicates yes.
Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The planning department mailed 86 public hearing notices, and the owner to the adjacent property provided a letter of support for granting the variance. No other public comment, I'm sorry, the South Fork Community Council did not provide any comments. They, I'd like to point you to a laid-on-the-table item, another one, the neighbors provided a letter of non-objection to the granting of the variance, and that's the sufficiency of notice. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you. Pages six and seven of your packet show the proposed plot plan and the final as-built, and you can see the difference resulted in the encroachment, or in the need for this variance. This is a request for a variance to allow a garage to encroach 2.6 feet into the 25-foot side yard setback. The owner constructed a detached garage in 2011 under an approved building permit. The garage was built in a slightly different location than where it was proposed on the approved plot plan on file with the building permit. The building permit was never closed out, and the 2.6-foot encroachment of the existing garage is holding up the sale of the property. Of the eight standards of approval, standard number one does not appear to be met. There's no extraordinary physical circumstance of the subject property. The property is rectangular in shape, and is relatively flat. However, the lot does not meet the minimum required lot area of 1 and 1/4 acres because the subdivision pre-existed the Assembly Ordinance 84-143. Standard number two does not appear to be met. Strict application of the R-10 district regulations requires a 25-foot setback from the east property line. The two-story detached garage was constructed in 2011. It was built at an angle not parallel to the property line. Therefore, a very small corner of the garage encroaches 2.6 feet into the required setback. Detached garages are a common right of enjoyment in this district and in this particular neighborhood as well. Standard number three, the peculiarity of the lot is that it doesn't meet the minimum required lot area of 1 and 1/4 acres. The proposed variance would allow the 2.6-foot encroachment into the side setback. The need for the variance is the result of a mistake made during construction of the garage. Standard number four is met. There are no structure separation violations. Drainage and runoff do not appear to be problems. There have been no objections from the neighbors or the community council, and the most affected neighbor provided a letter of support for the variance. Standard five, the variance request is a dimensional variance, not a variance for prohibited use. With the granting of the variance, will not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six is met. There's no identified health or safety issues with this property. The owner is seeking relief for the detached garage, which is a permitted accessory use in the R-10 SL district. Standard number seven is not really applicable. This is not related to ADA accessibility or reasonable accommodation. And the last standard, number eight, does not appear to be met. The garage could have been built in a conforming location on the lot. However, the encroachment is not visually obvious. The nearest point of the garage to the east lot line is 22.4 feet, and the required setback is 25 feet. The department must recommend a denial of the variance, because standards one, two, three, and eight do not appear to be met. However, if after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards of approval are met, then it, the department recommends that the approval be subject to conditions one and two on page five of your packet, and these are standard conditions of approval. Thank you. Be happy to answer questions, and the petitioners here as well.
Are there any questions of the staff by the board? Would the applicant please come forward and state your name for the record, and spell it?
Good afternoon. Edward Walden, E.D.W.A.R.D., W.A.L.D.E.N., representative for Mr. Ballard, and with Keller Williams Realty.
Do you have any questions of the staff?
No questions at this point.
Okay, would you please present your case?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin, for explaining in detail, and not to be redundant, but I would just like to present on Mr. Ballard's behalf, the fact that the permitting process was followed. They did a proposed as-built for the garage. During construction, it was tilted on its access a little bit, unbeknown to Mr. Ballard or the construction team that developed it or built it. It wasn't until the final permit process, where he got his as-built done, that he recognized that he was a distance within, inside. And the way they developed that, and Mr. Ballard's been like this ever since we sold him this property in 2006, they dug eight foot into a foundation for it, and it's structurally designed it so it would not move. It's a very well-built garage, and it would be economically impractical for him to move it because of that. I know a small portion of it lies in there. It was not intentional on his behalf, and he's just looking for relief for that piece of it. We, I've been through it, I've walked around it, and there's not much that we could do at this point to rectify the situation, and that's why he's looking for relief. It was just a mistake made on the construction team that could have probably been prevented had they done the measurements accurately when they built the foundation. And it was done in 2011, and we noticed it during the as-built when it was done. And he sincerely apologizes, he apologized to his neighbor and anybody that it would possibly affect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, eight minutes? You have eight minutes for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Oh, Mr. Ayers, I got it. Mr. Ayers, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair, Mr. Walden. My question is, was there any specific reason why the builder moved the garage from the permitted location, other than just he didn't know where it was supposed to be?
No, according to Mr. Ballard, they looked at the front of the building and the direction, and the way it was in the proposed as-built that was planned was to run parallel with the property line, and the builder thought, okay, well, and Mr. Ballard agreed, well, we'll just tilt it on its access a little bit and move it. It was supposed to still be, that corner was supposed to still be within the 25 feet outside of the 25-foot mark, and that's what they agreed to. But during construction, apparently, it just didn't happen that way. So what they thought and intent was to align it better with the driveway, just a hair, so he can get his, he's got a very large truck, so he can get his truck into the garage. But they should have surveyed that a little bit better and moved that, adjusted that. The construction crew should have done that. The builder should have done that, and it was not done, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Walden? Mr. Hale?
Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm just wondering, it looked like on the original plot plan that it had plenty of room. I'm just wondering, was there not a surveyor hired to stake the thing, so you knew where the corners actually were going to?
There was, originally, there was a stake there, yes. And it was there during the construction, the foundation, when they initially did it, the stake was removed. And according to Mr. Ballard, when they decided to move it on its access, that's when, because of the foundation was dug eight foot deep, and they had that there, the space to do that, they should have remeasured at that point.
So they basically did a field move?
And they did basically a field move. They had the foundation completely dug out, and that's when they looked at the alignment and everything that was there, and decided to move it on its access just a little bit, but they should have restaked it and re-marked it at that point and moved it over. According to Mr. Ballard, they had the space to do it. They just, the construction, the builder, did not remeasure that from the property marker over to the side. They thought they were well within their space allotment.
Thank you.
Ms. Hickok?
Through the chair, Mr. Walden.
I will see that the as-built was done in 2016, but the construction was done in 2011.
Is there a reason why there was a five-year delay?
Not that I know of. Ma'am, he knew that he was selling his property, and he was waiting for something to be done, so I believe he thought he was going to get an as-built survey done to sell his property. We'd been talking about it for several years now. He recently was married, and things have changed, so he's moving out of state. And I think he was just planning to have the as-built survey just done and the permit closed out at one time, instead of having to do an additional as-built survey. And I don't think he believed it was going to take that long to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Walden? Are there any questions of Mr. Walden by the staff?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walden. Is there any other, anyone else, let's see, hang on, I get it.
Ma'am, I just got here, and I finally found the 045.
Yes.
Can I speak on that?
Yeah, hang on, just a second. I guess I didn't write that one down. All right. The public hearing is then open, and is there anyone else wishing to testify in this case? Please come forward and state your name for the record. And you weren't here for the procedure, but you have three minutes.
Anyway, I live next door to this gentleman at River Park Drive, on the east-west of him, and I own, have lived in there 20 years, and I didn't realize that our property, we can't use 25 feet over there, or 25 feet over here. When I moved there, I put some portable buildings up, built a dog kennel, greenhouse, and when I bought the land, there was a building outside on the west of our property line, and if this 25, it was illegal when we bought the property. And now they tell me, and we're on flat ground, there's several of us down there that are on flat ground, and I just don't understand why we can't use that 25 feet. It's there to look at, and we got to pay taxes on it. And anyway, Marvin Ballard, he done a bunch of measuring, and he got the permits to do the building and everything, and then now, he decided he's going to sell his property, and now it's off a few inches into that 25 feet. And I just don't understand, I can come down Maloon Road, and I get past Fed Myers, and I look at this new addition we have there, and that building is, what, 15 feet from the creek, from the water? And you guys are worried about 25 feet, and whatever, as long as the neighbors are happy, and if you can get a 15-foot easement on the property, if your neighbor will let you, he'll write a deal saying that you get a 15-foot easement. I just don't understand, and Marvin's neighbor will give him a 15-foot easement, and I just don't understand what all this is all about, when we got, you come to Anchorage, and the buildings are this far apart, and that far from the creek, and it's all right. I just don't understand it. I, anyway, I'm Roger Van Orunum. I live right next to Marvin Ballard. It's 20911 River Park Drive, Eagle River.
Could you spell your last name, please?
V.A.N., capital O.R.N.U.M. Two words.
Thank you, Mr. Van Orunum. Is there any questions by the board for Mr. Van Orunum? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify in case 2016-0045? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion? Rebuttal? Sorry, oops. Now, we're going to open the public hearing again, very quickly, and give Mr. Walden any rebuttal? He indicates not. Then we'll close the public hearing again. Anybody else? Okay. Now, may I have a positive motion in this case, please? Mr. Cars?
Yes, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2106-1, dimensional standards, residential districts, to allow a garage to encroach 2.6 feet into the required 25-foot east side yard setback in the R-10 SL district, subject to conditions number one and two on page five of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Ms. Iker, you second?
I do.
Mr. Cars, will you speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I intend to support the motion. I do find that all eight standards are met. The, reviewing the conditions, I'll go through each of those. I believe that the staff has done an adequate job of describing all of the standards being met. I'd like to speak to standards they found are not met, and why I do feel that those findings are met. With respect to finding number one, exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, this is a smaller lot than that allowed by zoning, the point 9.2 lot size. The smaller lot, with the smaller lot, having a 25-foot setback on that smaller lot provides a smaller buildable area, so I do find that that is an exceptional circumstance. And for that same reason, find that standard number two is met. I'd also like to note, as staff had indicated, this isn't a continual encroachment into the 25-foot setback, but a smaller portion of that, the northeast corner of the garage. Standard three, the original house, with the location of the original house being constructed on, a smaller lot again, does make the separations and setbacks a little more difficult. I do wish the petitioner was here to express the disappointment that they did not have a survey done, and whether it was the builder or the owner that made the mistake, it very easily was an avoidable mistake. And I realize you're the messenger, but that is very, very concerning. I put a lot of weight, I appreciate the resident that came to testify this evening, and what we also heard in staff packets, on the side yard setback, typically, the most impacted people are the adjacent residents, and the fact that we have support from the adjacent property owners does weigh in my decision. But that is disappointing, that I think a step was missed. I do agree with staff that standards four, five, six, and seven are met, and I do find that standard eight is met, in that this is a minimal amount of variance with this triangular wedge that we're talking about. So for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Ms. Iker?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Cars', findings. I want to add, or to speak really briefly to standards one, two, and three, because those are often the standards we struggle the most with. As you know, the board has to find that all eight standards are met in order to grant the variance. So in speaking to the first three standards, the ones I struggled the most with, I do find that the narrow width of the lot is an exceptional physical characteristic of the lot, making it more difficult to make adequate use of the land. And I think that what was persuasive to me on that point, and standard number two, was your note that the decision to turn the garage a little bit on the access was for ease of ingress and egress with the homeowner's vehicle and access to the garage. I struggle a little bit with standard number three, because typically, we don't consider the actions of the homeowner separate, distinct from the actions of the professionals that they hire to construct. So while I also concur with Mr. Cars' that I wish the homeowner had hired professionals that adequately used the necessary surveying equipment, I think that the facts are such that we can say that this hardship was not self-imposed. I concur with staff's recommendations on the balance of the standards, and Mr. Cars' finding that the two foot, sorry, 2.6 feet is the minimum variance that will make a possible reasonable use of the land in standard number eight. So for these reasons, I tend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Mr. Hale?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm having a bit of a hard time with this, especially number three, because what I've heard, if you look at the original plot plan, this looked completely doable, there's plenty of room. It was outside of the setback, there's 15 feet between the house and the garage. So fitting that garage wasn't an issue. The issue was that they did a field move, and they didn't do it with the benefit of the survey. I think that the intent here was to put it outside, but, you know, it ended up inside, and I don't know how we can say that that was not self-imposed, when they themselves physically moved the stakes. So I don't, I guess I'm having a hard time with that in particular, because it seems like it's completely self-imposed, and it wasn't the intent. it's completely self-imposed and it wasn't the intention of the, the original survey.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dole. I skipped you.
Okay. Your turn. Okay. I, at the present moment, I'm not intending to support the motion. I'm having trouble with, actually, standards one, two, and three. I agree with my, my colleagues that small size can be, you know, smaller than normal size, we have found to be an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance. However, I believe that that is the case with other properties in this subdivision because it says that the subdivision was plotted, the entire subdivision was plotted before zoning. So that last clause about, you know, the, the circumstances not applicable to other land in the same district, I'm not convinced has been satisfied. With regard to number two, I don't believe that this smaller size deprived this property owner of an opportunity to have a two-story detached garage. There, it was because the terrain was flat, there's been no testimony, he could, he didn't have another place to put it. And as my colleague, my colleague, other colleague has just said, that the plan was to put it outside of that setback. With regard to standard three, I find that this was, was self-imposed because it was through, as Ms. Iker said, we consider the acts of professionals that are hired to be acts of, of the owner. And, and they could have built the two-story garage entirely outside of the setback area, and that was, in fact, their intent. So though, for those reasons, right now, I'm not convinced that standards one, two, and three are met. I agree with the staff's recommendations as to the other findings, four through seven. I do believe standard eight is probably met because the, there's, the, this application indicates that there's nothing that they could do to, to decrease the, the need for the variance or, or, so I believe that they're not asking for excess over what, what would be needed. I'm open to thoughts of other colleagues or responses to that.
Ms. Iker.
I am also having concerns on standard number three. It was stated by the petitioner's representative that he was involved in the decision-making of rotating the building, the garage. So therefore, it is technically self-imposed. Therefore, I don't believe I can support this motion as it is unless I'm convinced otherwise.
Mr. Ayers.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I am struggling with condition number three as well. There are conforming alternatives. It was a decision, a poorly made decision to move the building. There was a number of years, it obviously passed between when they had the plot plan prepared and when they actually constructed the garage. But it is very difficult to find that they didn't impose this, the need for this variance on themselves. I can support the findings for standards one and two. I think that, given the difficulty of zoning variance process, this is a non-conforming lot. It did enjoy those rights. It is narrower than other lots in that area. It is also a very small variance. So as far as standard eight, I find I could support that argument. But I am too struggling with standard number three. So I'd be interested in some more possible discussion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Any other discussion? I will not be supporting the motion. I, I agree with those that, that are having trouble with number three. I also am having trouble with number eight. I don't see that, yeah, anyway, that's it. So with that being said, would you please vote? That motion does not pass. We needed five positive votes and there are only two, so. She indicates that she is here. Would the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice?
Yes, Madam Chair, there were 400 and, sorry, 247 public hearing notices mailed on May 19th.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
The petitioner requests a variance from table 21 dot 06 dash one to allow an existing garage to encroach 4.2 feet into the front yard setback. The existing garage projects into the front yard setback and was built without an approved variance or a building permit. Ms. Sorenson's application states that the encroachment was discovered on February 26, 2016, when she applied for permits to build a garage in the backyard of her home next to the alley. The garage was built to replace a carport that a home inspector deemed unsafe. The narrative states there was no change in the dimensions from the former carport to the new garage. Findings, standard A, the standard is not met. There are no exceptional physical circumstances of the, of the land that warrant granting of a variance. The lot is not affected by slopes, streams, or wetlands. The lot is similar in size and shape to the other adjoining lots. The lot is approximately a lot, one and a half lots for that particular neighborhood. Standard B, the standard is not met. There are no physical circumstances of the land contributing to the need for this variance. The petitioner is not deprived of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the R1 district. Standard C, the standard is not met. The owner built the garage without a building permit and thus the encroachment into the front yard setback is self-imposed. Remodeling the garage so that it does not encroach into the setback does not impose an undue hardship on the property owner. The physical characteristics of the lot are not peculiar. The lot is a typical rectangular shape and without unusual slope. Standard D, the variance is met. Rogers Park is one of the oldest neighborhoods in the city, and there are numerous examples of yard encroachments, but many of these have grandfather rights. Given the character of the neighborhood, it does not appear that the granting of this variance will have an adverse effect on adjacent properties. The petitioner has provided statements from her neighbors in support of the improvements she has made to the residents. Standard E, the standard is met. The requested variance for front yard setback encroachment will not change the character of the R1 zoning district. If the variance is granted, it would not allow a use not permitted in the district. Standard F, the standard is met. The request should have little to no negative impact to neighboring residents. Standard G, the standard is not applicable to this particular case. Standard H, the standard is not met. The only available conforming alternative is to reduce the size of the garage by 4.2 feet. This may make the garage too small to park a car, but the structure could be used for other purposes such as workshops, studio, or storage. The petitioner's application states that the encroachment was discovered when Ms. Sorenson tried to get a permit to construct a garage in the backyard adjacent to the alley. If Ms. Sorenson's intent is to build another garage in the backyard, she could do that and reduce the, the size of the garage in the front yard. Department recommendation, the department finds that standards A, B, C, and H are not substantially met and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If after a public hearing, the, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions one and two on page five of the packet.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions of the staff by the board? Okay, seeing none, would you come forward, please? And state your name for the record.
My name's Darcie Sorenson, D A R C I E Sorenson, S O R E N S E N.
Do you have any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Then would you present your case, please?
I'm requesting this variance because I feel that the garage, it would be more problematic to remove four feet, four feet of the garage to comply with the setback than it would be to leave it as is. I purchased the home in 2011 and it was found to have a lot of problems with the existing carport with structural support. And the building inspector recommended that I correct that. I hired a licensed contractor who was going to do the work for me and I asked if it could be enclosed at that time. And we talked about permits and he said that if I used the same exact permit, that it wasn't required. He was from Taupitna and I was misinformed on the, on his recommendations, but the exact same footprint was used for the garage. And I feel that that's, the current garage is very characteristic of the neighborhood. There's multiple houses along my street that have the exact same difficulty with setbacks. I've had tons of neighbors come up and thank me for all the work that I've done at the house. And they don't feel that it's problematic that the garage is that close to the road. It's not noticeable by the untrained eye that it's too close to the road. No one has ever brought it up. I've talked to all my closest neighbors and none of them have trouble with where the garage is. It isn't, the lots in Rogers Park are very small. So that could potentially be one of the reasons why they initially put the carport in the place that it is. Initially, the carport was built in 1964 and that was before the current zoning laws are, were in effect. And that's one of the reasons why I would hope that this could be grandfathered in. And as far as it being self-imposed, I, I guess if I had spent more time researching the different municipal zoning laws, I would, I would understand that. But I apologize, I work in healthcare and have no idea. I've never remodeled a home before and did not know that I needed permits on that. And no one during that whole building process advised me that I did need permits. And I apologize, I, I did realize that you need them for new construction and I'm hoping to build a separate place in the backyard and I've obtained all the permits for that and am planning to use all of, go by all of the municipal laws and whatnot. So I apologize for not getting a permit. I'm happy to have everything inspected now. I heard you could go back and get permits, but I do feel that removing four feet of the garage would cause more problems as far as with my neighbors and bringing construction to the neighborhood than just leaving the structure as is. And there's no, I, I've only improved the property. There's no difficulty with fire and health and safety and all of that stuff, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sorenson. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Dole.
Thank you. Ms. Sorenson, I guess I'm looking at page 24 that has the, a picture of, an older picture. It shows the carport on it.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's other diagrams in here, but I, I heard both you and the staff refer to an existing permit application. And one of those times I heard a reference to another garage. And I guess I'm just, I'd like to clarify if there's, what, if there's another garage in works or on the property or?
I mean, this garage is only about 200 square feet. It does fit a car in the front, so it's convenient to be able to pull in to your home and unload groceries and whatnot. But I am building a separate garage in the back and that would suffice for my, my needs. I just feel it's more of an undue hardship to remove a structure that is the way it is when there's, I don't see a benefit to removing four feet of that structure. And I feel it could make it unsafe and, by removing it. I haven't met with a building planner I need to see or a construction to see the possibilities of removing that. I was waiting to find the results of this hearing.
Okay. Do you want to say anything else relating to safety? You just said it might be unsafe.
I'm not, I, I don't do construction, so I will hire someone to remove that section of the garage. But I would anticipate there could be problems with building support, structure beams and whatnot. And the exact same structure beams that were used in the carport are incorporated in the garage now. It's the exact same footprint that was there before.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Mr. Ayers?
Thank you, through the Chair. Ms. Sorenson, you were just talking about the, the structure of the garage now. It's still based on the post and beam construction of the carport?
Yes, it's the exact same post. I mean, it's, he made it stronger and I'd be happy to get permits, have that inspected.
It does not have a, a new foundation or a concrete slab?
There is a concrete, a port, a concrete driveway and slab, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or I didn't, that was done as part of it.
May I ask a question of staff?
Certainly.
My question for staff is, it appears that the original carport may have had non-conforming rights, but that has not been demonstrated here in the packet. And the second part of that question is, if the structure needed to be repaired, it could have been repaired, at least to the extent of the original nonconformity. Could it have also been enclosed? If that's not too complicated, thank you.
Through the Chair, Mr. Ayers. No, I mean, there was no demonstration in the packet that there were grandfather rights, that there was a letter of nonconforming determination made for this, for the carport. Your second question is, could they, could she have enclosed it? And the way grandfather rights or nonconforming rights work is that if it, excuse me, if the structure was built prior to code requirement, then they can keep that structure and it can remain. But if they make any change- can remain, but if they make any changes to it, it has to move in the direction of conformity. And so, once you enclose what was originally just a carport, then it has to move towards conformity. So, once you turn a carport into a garage, it has to conform with the existing code.
I'd like to go back to the petitioner now, if I may. Through the Chair, Ms. Sorenson, your application states in your narrative that you did not expand on the existing carport, yet when you look at the as-built, it appears to be about 2.6 feet wider and about 8 tenths of a foot or 10 inches closer to the road. I'm not sure where I need to go with that, actually. My question is, you know, the as-built contradicts your application, so it has been expanded and it is closer to the street.
All I can say is that happened without me knowing it and I don't know where the discrepancy in the measurements are. And I didn't personally measure it myself, so I don't know if those are correct measurements and the builder built it closer to the road or expanded upon it, but that wasn't done with me knowing it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions of the applicant? Does the staff have any questions? She indicates no. Thank you, Ms. Sorenson. Is there any else, anyone else wishing to testify in case 2016-0056? Anyone at all? Hearing none, seeing none. You do have some rebuttal time. Do you care to use any of, she indicates not. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, then I think the public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed. Madar rest with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Ayers?
Madam Chair, in case number 2016-0056, I move for approval of the variance from AMC Table 2106-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, to allow garage to encroach in the required setback in the R1 district. Subject to staff's Condition 1 and 2 on Page 5 of the packet.
Is there a second? Mr. Hale? Mr. Ayers, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm having a tough time supporting this motion. The, as far as Standard A, I don't believe that the petitioner has met the burden of proof to show that they are in any physical circumstances on the subject property that are peculiar. The circumstances would not justify the variance. For Standard B, it would be the same finding. For Standard C, the hardship does appear to be self-imposed, albeit not intentional. The expansion of the encroachment into the front yard setback is one of the reasons why I think it would be extremely hard to support that standard being met. On Standard D, E, and F, I agree with staff that those standards are met. I agree that Standard G is not applicable. And I do not find that Standard Number H is met. There are conforming alternatives, including returning it to the carport under the original grandfather rights. Thank you.
Mr. Hale?
Through the Chair, thank you. Yeah, I'm having kind of a hard time with it, too. It looks like the carport was expanded a bit. You know, hiring a contractor that doesn't understand the process is not always a good idea, but unfortunately, we're kind of bound by this code and I don't know how we can, you know, we can't, it's not within our authority to change it. So, I also think that Condition A was not met, doesn't seem to be any exceptional physical circumstances that are requiring a deviation or requirement to building a setback. You could, I think that, you know, maybe if you'd have just left the carport, it would have been fine, sounded like nobody would have cared about that, but now that it's physically changed, here we are. So I think it, also with C, which one, not C, which one is it here? The standard that's self-imposed, yeah, C. It does seem like it's self-imposed, unfortunately. I'm sympathetic to the fact that, you know, the owner isn't a contractor, doesn't understand all the ins and outs of permitting, but unfortunately, you do have to rely on your professional to guide you through the process and it sounds like maybe some bad advice and I don't know how we can say that it's not self-imposed, so I'm kind of having a hard time supporting, allowing it at the moment.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Dole?
I share the same concerns and tend to support the motion. I don't believe that Standard A is met because I'm not, I don't see any peculiarities, any physical circumstances that are applicable that would require, that would prevent compliance or require that the garage not be placed in a different location. I don't find there'd be an exceptional or undue hardship because she still can have a garage on the property and I don't, although I appreciate that she didn't intentionally do this, that unfortunately, the contractor gave her bad advice and that's very unfortunate, but it, it doesn't satisfy the standard. And I also don't find that Standard H is met for the reason given by staff.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Any other testimony from the staff? Any else? Mr. Cars?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually do intend to support the motion. The, in looking at, I don't get hung up on whether a building permit was or was not issued as the primary reason for supporting or not supporting a motion. We could very well be here and on Page 24 of the staff packet, the as-built at the time showed a carport that was of the approximate dimensions of 10.6 feet wide, 20.2 feet deep. And their request would come in to, you know, the house was built in 1951, they wanted to enclose that carport into a garage. I do believe that the home construction in 1951 limited the options for a garage location and this board has found in the past, a garage is a use of, that's commonly enjoyed by other properties in the area. So, the timing of the original construction in 1951 and the, this is the only practical location for a garage off the front of the house, I do believe that's an exceptional circumstance. Also, looking at what's the reason for that setback? The right-of-way is approximately 30 feet, 29.3 feet, so if you look at what a standard street width would be, there'd be an additional 10 to 15 feet of right-of-way before the driveway would intersect with the street. So, again, I do feel that those are situations that allow me any way to find that Finding A is met. And, again, the exceptional or undue hardship of Standard B would be that they are not allowed to enclose that garage off the front of the house. Again, the Item C hardship being self-imposed, again, I don't get hung up on whether, 100% on whether or not they come in before or after the permit. We could still very well be listing to this case prior to their construction and having to make the same decision. So, the timing of the construction of the house lends me to believe that Finding C is And again, this, I don't find that it's just a, merely an inconvenience. I do concur Standards, or Findings D, E, F, and G are met and I do believe that H is met and that this is a, while it's enlarged over the original carport dimensions, I think we're splitting hairs if we say it's expanded, it's a single-car garage. I don't find it's an overbuilt, single-car garage. So, for that reason, I find that the standard is met and intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Anyone else?
I am not going to support the motion. I acknowledge that the need for this variance was unintentional and I sympathize with the applicant, but I do believe that this is not, the variance doesn't make the land, it's Number H. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land and I don't believe that this variance has anything to do with a reasonable use of the land, that the land, without this, without this variance, that there is still a reasonable use for the land. Anyway, with that being said, please vote.
That variance does not pass. You only have two positive, two positive votes and you needed to have five, so, sorry. Okay, so that's the end of the public hearing section of the agenda. I don't have any reports, other than to welcome our two new members, Ms. Hake and Mr. Hale. It's so nice to have a fully constituted board. Does the Secretary have any, anything to say?
Thank you, through the Chair. Just want to remind you, there is not a meeting next month.
And no committee reports. Any board member comments? Nope.
Thanks for having me on the board. I'm looking forward to working with everyone and you're getting learning experience. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. Motion to adjourn? Ms. Dole, Ms. Ayers, seconds, we are adjourned.